Mr. Chairman, Administrator's Report tonight. Employee service anniversaries, which we have every year, every month. Ms. Deborah Weldon has 21 years, Johnny Fair 16 years, and Tanya Harmon 16 years. The Sheriff's Department is handling the Community Kitchen Lunch tomorrow, so that's something we've been doing for a time now. Then we also have the Association of Counties Annual Conference coming up, August 1st through 3rd. Please make sure you get up with Ms. Bundy to make sure she gets you signed up for that. That's a good event, especially for new folks to kind of get educated on some of the things that they have to offer from the Association of Counties. With regards to Administrator's Report, we did have our community cleanup event, and we're pleased with the 380 folks that came out and the three and a quarter tons of trash collected. It went fairly well. We actually had better turnout than the event prior. Appreciate Ms. Bundy's work in putting that together with other folks on staff. It does seem that, you know, people aren't as enthused about doing it, and, you know, we'll look at, you know, how to do it in the future or do something different, and certainly welcome any ideas from you folks. The Recreation Project, RFP, request for proposals. The Image Committee has finalized the advertisement for a consultant to study our recreation programs and facilities, so everything's in place to advertise that. And then that consultant will come in, and as we talked several times before, and tell us what we have and what we need and can support. And they'll also help us identify sources of money. So this, we hope that, as we said before, to have this completed, or at least have one chosen in the next 60 days, and put that advertisement on before the end of the week. We advertise that on a state website called Skebo, South Carolina Business Opportunities. It's sort of a standard place you advertise for those kind of things. So we're happy, we're, we're, I hope that we'll have a good response to that. Also, that's something that's been advertised, is the spec building, the industrial spec building, and those proposals are due on Thursday, the 10th. Now, you know, we have a set budget for that. We received a grant from Department of Commerce to pay for $1.7 million of the $2.3 million. And we are very much on pins and needles about how that'll come in because of the material costs. But we'll know, you know, we'll know Thursday, and we'll let you all know. That would go to the Infrastructure Committee of the Partnership, which is utilities and city administrator, county administrator, folks that will go through them and evaluate them, and then bring them to you all to approve, or to look at the recommendation. And there's a whole set of things to grade the proposals on, so that'll all be done. We're being told more and more that as soon as we can get this thing done, that we can fill it up, because people, because of material costs, don't often want to take the chance to build in something, they'd rather buy something that's already built. So we hope that they're accurate on that. Recreation, we've talked about recreation several times. We ended up having five teams of four- to six-year-olds in T-ball. It went very well, there's another week of games, and then the next week, there'll be a pizza party and a trophy ceremony for those kids. We're also very pleased and happy that the basketball summer league has gone very well. We have enough players for three teams in the eight-to-12-year-old ages, three teams in the 13-to-17. I think that was usually like 14 and 17, but we had one 13-year-old straggler, so they rounded him up. And have six teams in the adult league, six teams, which I think says something about things now. You know, kids are a lot more reluctant to get out and play outdoor stuff where adults want to get out. So additionally, we have some eight-and-under kids, and we'll structure that in a kind of an instructional league kind of camp thing. Now, everybody signed up with the draft on the, on the registration, so that's the intent, is to move forward with the draft. There will be some protection, so if somebody's riding together, or siblings and things, so there's a little leeway on there. The Recreation Department tells me that, that they'll take new players up until practice next week. So they want to have practice next week, open practice, and then pick players. And they feel like, and you all may know, Dr. Johnson and Mr. Woods, that once people see things going on, they may be some more interested in that. And we're hoping that that's the case. So the plan is to have games at 5:30 on Monday through Thursday, and each group will have at least two games per week. And then, they haven't told me how long, I mean, weeks we'll do that. There's a lot of enthusiasm and people coming on here at the last minute, and, and we're happy, because we didn't really know what to expect. Broadband grants, I did put a map in there, I believe, in y'all's thing. It's not much of a map, but Sand Hill's Connections, Sand Hill's Telephone, Sand Hill's Cable Vision, has applied for the second round of CARES Act money, which is the same money they used the first time to build out these broadband lines into the county. And if you remember, they spent their money to begin with to run it down the main highways. And now they want to spend the money to go out into, into the neighborhoods. So if you look at this map, if anybody found it, it's kind of hard to read, but the green, the green areas are where they want to go. And you can see this really kind of going up in the country. So, and the areas they're not going, they've already got a lot there in place. So they're, they expect to get funded, and they, they're not sure if they'll get everything they asked for. There are about a handful of counties that are eligible for this money. But do keep your fingers crossed, they'll know by next week whether they got it, and if y'all have seen them the first time, they don't play around once they get it. I mean, they'll be out working. This is a big deal for, for the county to have this. And Sand Hill is the perfect one, because they're not-for-profit. The reason we don't have broadband is a profit company can't make a profit, so they're not going to spend money here. There also, there is a little small amount of money that we've seen, that's kind of like the money that fell out of the sky, but it's about $200,000, that can only be used for certain things, and one of them is broadband. So we're looking at whether or not, working with council governments, whether or not that money could be used, if the council could consider to put that money towards broadband also, if it can't be used for anything else. We don't know that yet. We'll know that soon, before the 21st. The last item I had here was a meeting with the city, towns, and school board. There had been some discussion before COVID about having everybody come together and try to have, you know, kind of a joint meeting where we, we talked about things we all want to do. Now, as a year has passed, now we're in a situation where the city's getting ready to do strategic planning, they've just approved that. The county's been doing it for a number of years, and in the fall, we'll, if we keep the schedule we've been doing, we'll look at it and update it again. And the Partnership is doing the recreation study. So it may be best to have, you know, if we have a meeting, to have one that just focuses on fellowship and kind of getting to know everybody and general conversation. And I've talked some with the city, with Dr. Prince, and I've talked some with Dr. McCord about this. And if y'all are agreeable, we will work with those folks to try to come up some dates and a place. I know, you know, I know Councilman Woods, all of you all have had interest in doing this, and find a place where we can gather and maybe break bread and, and get to know each other and try to find things that we can work on together. It would have to be a public meeting because of quorum, but, you know, I think you would not have any business necessarily there. So is everyone, Mr. Chairman, are y'all okay with trying to get some options for that?
All.
Okay, I think it's a good move.
Yeah.
Okay. So we will work on that and try to have you something by June 20th, when we come back together on Monday, the 21st.
Okay.
So that's all I have. I can answer questions if you have some.
One question. Are we open for business now? I mean, I know we're open for business, but since the government has taken away the emergency statutes, what is the position of the counties for outdoor events or anything?
The emergency ordinance that y'all have been rolling over and over has either expired or getting ready to expire. It's expired. So that takes my authority to do anything away, and I don't see anything we need to do. We've met with staff, the people that, you know, like Recreation and the museum and all that, and it is everybody's opinion that we go back to like it was. So we haven't put a memo out or anything, but yeah, I think we're back where we are. We are still asking employees if they're in a meeting and with people that, if they aren't vaccinated in a meeting, to wear a mask. But as far as outdoor events and all, you'll see something soon coming out unless somebody has opposition to it. Problem with that rule, the rules we've had, is it's difficult to enforce. And, you know, we've already seen a situation where we've seen some of our facilities used with a whole lot of people that really didn't have permission. I'm not real big on rules you can't enforce anyway. So your answer is yes.
It's a matter of that, where do we stand as a unit? That's what the citizens are looking for. They're looking for guidance from us. We need to make a statement as one way or the other, how we feel about it, whether we want it to be wide open, or do we want, still want restrictions on it. Can't enforce it, it's, it's hard to enforce, like you said.
Well.
Still looking for that guidance.
We can make sure it gets in the paper. One thing that we do need to do and make an equal statement on is, there has become this, people in the community don't seem to realize that they can't just go use stuff, they've got to come sign up.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, you're going to get to use it. But we've had at least something, a couple of weeks ago, on courthouse grounds that nobody knew anything about. And we at least need to know about it, so we make sure, you know, we have things written down, know who's responsible, insurance, releases, all that. So I think you'd be in agreement with the statement that here's what we're going to do, but also make sure you're calling ahead and make sure you got it.
Absolutely.
So.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good. Any more questions, Mr. Moon? All right, thank you, Mr. Moon. All right. Next, we have recognition of citizens' requests for the council. First, we have Ms. Pearlie Lawson.
I'm fully vaccinated, so I want to take off this my speech. Good, good evening, members of the council, Mr. Chairman, and members of the council, and also to you, Mr. Muntle, and ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for this opportunity to come before the council. And I'll be brief, because I'm, I'm, she's going to speak a few minutes after me, okay? All right. Just a few minutes to hand you something. Ms. McQueen, forgive me, having one of those moments. But my, my name is Pearlie Lawson, and I'm, number one is first, I want to thank you for allowing the issue that we are here to talk about to be placed on the agenda, and that you had some discussion. Thank you so much, so you have an idea of what, what we're going to speak about. But here, I'm here as one of the residents, and one of the spokesperson for the residents who live on State Street, Marshes Street, Collins Lane, and Graves Lane. We learned a few weeks ago that Pine Gates Renewable, a solar company out of Charlotte, North Carolina, wants to develop a commercial solar energy farm on a parcel land in our residential neighborhood. After hearing this, we, the residents in this area, met and we united together to draw up this petition that has 39 signatures. And when this petition, I want to leave this for Ms. Muntle, too, so you have something to act on, but we drew up this petition asking our leaders and elected officials to say no to stop the development of this solar farm in our neighborhood. We realize that solar has a, is very popular, and that there's a lot of benefits with solar. We also know that the landowner who sold the parcel land, I'm not sure who he is, but he's there to make money. So we're, we're aware of that. Yet, the solar farm will be located in our area. And when we say in our area, in our residential area, where we do not know what the harmful effects it may cause, we do not know what will take place. But we do know that we have families who live in that area. We have young adults with children ages zero to 12. We have middle-aged people who live in that area, and we have senior citizens, 65 to 80 years old. No one from this company talked to us, no one considered our feelings. Only thing we know, that we just got a letter from the landowner inquiring for them to buy this parcel land on her side of the offense. Hearing the discussion tonight, we know that the county is really interested in trying to make money and try to develop Marlboro County, and we agree with that. But let's think, if you had a, so, think about where Marshes Street is, coming off the bypass, in that little area. You have to leave the bypass to come, whether it's developed there or not, if you're a developer, you have to leave that bypass, come into a residential neighborhood with knitted houses to say to show off your solar company. What's wrong with number nine? What's wrong with Sherawah Highway? What's wrong with some of those open fields? We're not saying that we are against solar, but we are against it being located in our neighborhood that close. And that's what we want to present tonight. And we want to say to the council, thank you for understanding. We understand, too, that there's no, no zoning laws in place. We pray that you will consider that. We know that there could be some legality about, this company has already purchased this land, but we want to make a statement, we want them to know loud and clear, we do not want them in our neighborhood. So we want them to know that. Whatever it takes, we will stand together. Everybody from the community did not come tonight, we knew that we were going to be in a small space, but we are united. We'll flag off, wave our flags, we'll do what's needed, but we are here for our, our citizen. As I said, it should have been in a field area. I researched the company, they're in Charlotte, North Carolina, they're in Asheville, North Carolina, they're in Jackson Beach, Florida, and they also are in Millland, Missouri. They're farm, they're all in a farmland field land, and there's no housing nearby. So for that reason, we ask that you will consider our proposal, accept our petition that, to say that, to stop the development of this commercial solar company in our residential neighborhood. Thank you. All right? And I would like for you to have that. Ms. McQueen is going to be very brief.
You got a copy?
Yeah, I have, I made a copy. And I also want you to have a copy of the letter that was, that was sent for rec. Yeah, you got it. Okay. Thank you so much.
We're supposed to make sure everybody's signed up a few minutes before, but we're going to let her use a little bit of your time that you got.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right.
Ms. McQueen, they're going to allow you to use a little bit more of my time.
Yes, you got a little bit of time left, so let, well.
So you be brief, Ms. McQueen.
Yeah, just remind council, I mean, remind citizens that you're supposed to sign up a certain amount of time before.
But I didn't know.
Yeah, we're just, yeah, we're letting you know, but she's got a little bit of time left, so we let you take care of it.
What I have done is, when I heard about the solar farm, I did some research on it, because naturally you want to know what is going on, and what is going to come in your community. And of course, most people do that. I've heard about the pros and the cons. Now, those, the, those, the cons is the problem. Now, I've given you a handout on this, and it says, "Should a solar farm be located in a residential area? Solar projects should be positioned in a reasonably flat area away from severe human activity. Scientists want to put them in areas in which will have the least amount of adverse environmental impact. Dangerous electromagnetic radiators reduce life expectancy. There are a lot of electromagnetic waves around a solar farm produced by power shortage equipment. Such strong waves are very unhealthy to the body. People living with electromagnetic sensitivity should not live near solar tech farms. Habitat degradation destroys wildlife. Thousands of birds are killed each year from solar farms. If you live near a solar project and experience regular headaches and restlessness, then go to a checkup, it could be life-threatening. Improper disposal of waste materials from a solar facility are also very hazardous to the adjacent community, such as the waste materials and mainly energy storage materials like batteries. The property value drops. If you live near a solar industry, the continual stretch of blue is all the ice seas. It cannot compare to the beauty that swaying trees and birds flying from tree to tree offers. In 2016, it was estimated that solar farms around the United States killed nearly 140,000 birds annually. This number is not accurate, because some bird deaths are not reported. Many people's greatest worry when living near a solar farm is the electricity that is coming off of it. They worry that there is too much electricity, and it could be harmful to their health, their electronics, the state of their home, and so on. While we need birds, somebody said, okay, let the birds die. We need birds, far more than they need us. Birds control pests, birds pollinate plants, birds are nature's cleanup crew. Birds spread seeds, birds transfer entire landscapes, birds, birds inspire sinuses. I hope I didn't take all your time, but I want to live a little while longer.
All right, thank you, lady.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Pearlie is going to get me in trouble up here again, but, all right, I'm just kidding. Yeah, all right, thank you so much. Thank y'all for coming out, and like I said, we do, we do like hearing from our citizens whenever there's something in the area, and that's what, that's what we're here for, is ears to listen and do what we can for our citizens. Next, council members, Mr. Woods.
We, um, finally, in town of Claudio, we lost several goods and important people in our, in our town over the past year. And one thing, we know that it definitely is something that you can never prepare for, and we know we all want to die. But we lost some important people. Ms. Pearlie Lawson's mother, we lost Mayor Joe Kenny, Ms. Johnson, Andy Haley, you know, I don't want to leave anybody out, but these four people that were a person in Claudio that, that meant a lot to Claudio, no matter whether you the mayor, whether you the town handyman, that everybody can call on, a feature in Ms. Lawson, Ms. Covington, you know, she was always there, you know, for leadership. You know, there, we know we all have suffered death throughout this whole county. But we would continue, everybody would still continue to move on. I liked the, some of the things that has came today in the meeting, I think the meeting was very productive, a lot of information, and I'm looking forward to the 21st, when we close down this budget. I did not know as much information I did today about solar. I thank you for the information. It's, um, yeah, I like solar. You know, I think solar could be, and as I said, we all think nobody is against the thing of solar. Hopefully, maybe the county, maybe we have some land outside in rural areas that we can say, look, bring your solar farm here, in, in an area that the county own, out there in, that it's sitting there, and generate this money to help reduce the money that the sheriffs needed, the thing that we could use money for down the road. We're talking about, we're talking about millions and billions of dollars, and we got a lot of open land, you know, we need to maximize it. If the county didn't go on land, maybe they would leave the residential area, say, okay, thank you for the invite, we will go out there in Junifal, in Claudio. Claudio got a big old Junifal out there, you know, that is just land, just there. Farming don't farm on it, you know, it's just a space, you know. But if they don't know, if they don't know, they're going, they're going, they're going to go with someone who approached, opposed them. So if we can approach them, say, look, let's look at some areas that is not being used in the county, that is, that fit all their quote-unquote criteria that we're going to set up. And maybe they won't go to Marshes Street, they'd take that same money and say, okay, we go out here to Donbar Street somewhere, you know, out there where nobody farming, nobody doing nothing, away from everybody, and we're still going to generate that money, you know. And like I said, with the, with the mill increases, Dr. Steve said, you know, nobody likes a tax raise, but then yet, we got to make sure that law enforcement, and the other thing is well taken care of. Because as soon as somebody break in somebody's house, we can call Sheriff Lemon, somebody stole this, somebody stole that, or somebody shot us, and, well, I would, I would come by, I'm shot. I don't want to hear it. You know, he won't say that, but, you know, he have, if you don't have the manpower, you know, to do, to do your job, ain't so much anybody can do, you know. Can't bake a cake without an oven. I was going to say something else, but I'm going to leave that, I'm going to leave that oven. Go ahead, strobe.
All right, strobe.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody that sent their condolences to my family for the loss of my brother. We most certainly appreciate all your kind words and well wishes. Second of all, we have a native from Marlboro County, here in Benesville, that has declared her run for governor, Ms. Mia MacLeod. And I am, I can't be more proud than to, to have someone from Marlboro County, you know, making her, making her run for that office. Successful or not, it doesn't even matter, because it's Marlboro, she's from Marlboro County, you know. But then, and we go, you know, we do what's best. And as far as Ms. Lawson, thank you for your presentation. Ms. McQueen, thank you for your education, for educating us a little bit about solar We will evermore probably become a lot more educated on this matter, and we intend to do that. And as far as the millage is concerned, tax me if, if you give me a service, tax me. I don't like it when you tax me and I'm not getting anything for you. And that's been the case around this area for a long time. You know, we've had taxes, we haven't had tax increases for a while, but there's no services. When you, when you, when you don't have any revenue coming in, you can't have a valid service.
Sure.
You just can't. And so tax me if, if, if this is what it takes to take care of our law enforcement, because I want Sheriff Lemon, I want you to come. If something is, is at my house, I want you there, I want you being there, and I want 911 there, you know. So tax me, you know.
Thank you.
Continue prayers to everyone who has lost loved ones in this pandemic and beyond. Continue prayers to council members and their families. We know the job that we have to do is not an easy job, but it's necessary. Want to thank Ms. Lawson and Ms. McQueen for the presentation about these solar panels, solar farm, I think that's a popular thing as well around there, but there are some dangers, and making sure that those solar farms are in an appropriate area. You know, I'm not sure how to find Marshall Street in that area, out of all the stuff that we got in Marlboro County that's open, for them to find a residential area, for them to place something like that, I think it may be a disservice to those citizens in those communities. So anything that we can do within our means, I'm sure council will take that into consideration. I want to recognize two of my own constituents in District Two, Reverend Stubbs and his sister. Reverend Stubbs lives in the Leicester community, which is really a forgotten part of Marlboro County. A lot of elderly people are in that area, and no one, no one goes to check and see what's going on out there. You know, from, from the road condition to the mowing, the grass out there, they can't even walk down the street. You know, those citizens pay their taxes, and we're talking about millage increases, and they're not getting a return for the taxes they're paying right now. They are really concerned, they are active in their communities. Reverend Stubbs, we call her the mayor over there in Leicester, because she really keeps things together in that area. So whatever support the council and, and Public Works Department and we can give to those forgotten people in our county, there are many areas in our county that nobody thinks about twice. You know, no one goes to sleep and thinking about what our citizens in those, those areas have to deal with. Just in Richson Park, they had a sewage, raw sewage, you know, leak, and we've been talking about the flooding in that area, and we had about three weeks of no rain. We could have gone through those, those creeks and whatever we could have done. We've asked for a meeting with city officials and, and our building department to find out what we can. We can't do everything, but there's some stuff that we can do. We can't keep coming, I'm going to tell you, I had a conversation with a resident, and she was asking me some of the stuff that we can do. And everything she was telling me, and I was basically telling her what I would report is we can't do. And her question to me, what can y'all do? And I'm asking that question to us, what can we do? We keep telling, they paying their taxes every year, and every time they come to a council member, they, we telling them one thing, and they call somebody else, and they telling us another thing, and when they're calling somebody, it's, it's almost getting to the point where I'm asking them the same question, why are we a board? Why are we a council if there's nothing tangible that we can do to sometime to touch some of these citizens who are paying their taxes, who are not getting a return on what they're paying, who invest in their community? Some of these people being in these areas thirty, forty, fifty years. And, and for them to, to at one point say, you know what, let, let me call my council member and see if we can get, you know, a, a role repaired, and for them to, to be told that it's the state's, um, job to do it, you know, um, it, it, it's a disservice to us, and it, it hurts our credibility on what we can do. So I'm asking that question of all of us, it's a rhetorical question, what is our purpose? And what can we do? Are we just gonna meet month to month and with no engagement, collaboration, communication within the, the thirty days we meet, and then we meet again, and then we meet again, and there's nothing, something? If I wasn't on council, I'd ask that same question, what do we do? And I've asked that question tremendously over the years before I was fortunate enough to become a council member. What do they do? And if this is the operation that we go through, and, and, and I can see why Marlboro County is in the condition it's in for the past twenty-five years that I've been of age to be, uh, uh, um, cultured enough to understand what's going on, if this is the way we operate, I see why Marlboro County is the highest in the state in almost every negative category ever. Because it's, if this is our operation, and there's no change to this operation from month to month, then in another five years, we're gonna be right back here talking about the same issues, doing the same, um, appointments, doing the same, um, ordinances with no movement whatsoever. We have to do better. Our citizens deserve us doing better. And if we're still operating the same operator five years ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, then we've had members on these committees all across the county in those same years, twenty years, and we're still in this position. It's because there's been no movement. There's been none. We meet and we go home, and we come the next month and we meet, and then we go home. We have to change that trajectory. We have to change something that we're doing, cause it's obviously, there's something we're doing is not right. It's obviously that something we're doing is not right, and, and if we have an opportunity to change, uh, our procedures or what we can do, then I think it's beneficial for us to come together and say, if we've been operating like this for the last fifty years, and we have no change, it'd be crazy for us to continue year after year with no changes to anything. I, I, I pray hard for this county, I pray hard for this, this, this council, but I'm telling you that if we don't change something, if we don't change our procedures and the way we doing things, then we're gonna be right back here another year talking about the same stuff, revisiting the same issues with no movement whatsoever. That's my spiel, thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for sharing the comments on the solar system and all I, I agree to. There's a place, uh, in town that, you know, certainly don't need to be in a residential area, and that's why we gotta get together and get some kind of zoning took care of on it, you know? You know, there's, there's a place for it, it'd be ripe, there's a place for it. So I agree with everybody on that, you know? You know, we'll get together and look at all of that. And I want to thank staff and everybody for what, I think they've done a pretty good job over the last few years, myself. We, we, uh, had some tough stuff we had to deal with, this detention center that we built, um, the, they want trash dump, mega dump. We've done a lot more than some people see. Uh, we, we kept all that out of here, um, you know, we've kept taxes just as low as we can. We've tried to do everything we can to pull people. The trash situation, um, you know, we, uh, the library, we've had some big obstacles in our way in the last five, six years, um, that we have really, if you look back, you'll see we've done a tremendous job. And, you know, and our love's not perfect. Now, I agree that, um, we need to keep our eye on the ball and let's keep things rolling. But, you know, there's been more done here than a lot of people see too. Um, and if you go back and look to what's been hap- done in the last ten years, you'll see so much stuff. So, you know, I, I, I can't put the council down like that. I got to say that, you know, that we, we've done a pretty good job now, you know, I, and we've worked good together, and, uh, you know, I, I just want people to see that for us too. But, uh, you know, I appreciate the citizens, and, and, you know, I will do my best, and I thank everybody on here with, to keep the taxes as low as we can and get the most for them. That's what we after, you know? And, and, you know, I'm here for the betterment of Marlboro County, not Blenheim, not one section, the whole county. If it's a good plan following us, I vote for it, I promise you that. So, you know, and, you know, I just appreciate staff, thank staff, and thank the citizens too.
Well, what I'd like to say, uh, is, um, the Academy Road Project is probably, maybe this week or early next week, we should be able to hear something definite that it's gonna get started. The money is appropriated, and, uh, that's the feedback I'm getting is, uh, they say within two to, two to three weeks, which this is the second week, uh, we should hear something. Uh, one thing I want to talk about, and this is directed toward the Sheriff's Department, uh, last Friday, Mark Keel, the Director of SLED, he gave a thirty-minute, uh, public relation, I mean, public news conference. And in the past year, uh, crime in South Carolina has gone up twenty-five percent, violent crime and murders, and it's not just restricted to the Greenwood Spartanbergs and the Colombians and the Charles, it's restricted all over the county, Iowa County, Dillon County, Chesterfield County. Um, a lot of High Points is probably one of the best con- best news conferences I've ever seen to let the public know about what kind of situation we're in as far as crime in South Carolina. As a matter of fact, in the last five years, crime has gone up. And a couple of the High Points that, uh, Chief Keel said, Sheriff Lemon, he can't, they can't do it all. They've got to have community involvement, and that's what we're lacking at all over this state. It's the community, when you see something going wrong in, on your community, uh, you see guys running into a house that you know don't live there, you need to call nine-one-one or the Sheriff's Department and let them know so they can get somebody moving in that direction. It's just not, it's just not a law enforcement problem, it's a community problem, and everybody needs to get involved. And the last thing I want to say, a lot of y'all remember, uh, the former, uh, Chief, Robert Stewart from Cheryl, he always used to say him, he said, if you don't have a safe, if it's not safe to go to church, if it's not safe to go to school, if it's not safe to go to work, then you don't have a community. And we need community involvement to support Sheriff Lemon and his deputies and all the law enforcement people in this, uh, in this county. To reiterate what, uh, Mr. Blackman said, uh, I've only been on here, I'm starting my second term, but over the years, I've, uh, my dad was on this council sixteen years, and there's a lot's gone on in the past years and stuff. You look at the Sheriff's Department, the way we handle their vehicles and stuff, tremendous savings for Marlboro County and gives them better vehicles every time they go out on the road. Marlboro County has covered our fire department with the way that we have invested money in our fire station. We've got some of the best insurance ratings and some of the best fire coverage of any county in the state. The EMS system that we did, that was done primarily on citizen complaints about response times that EMS was, when it took them thirty and forty minutes to get to your house. And now they're on time, their vehicles and everything, everything has improved with the EMS, and, and you can go on and on, you know? We are pretty much depressed as far as industrial taxes and stuff, so we're dependent upon the taxpayers, you know? That is our revenue, you know? And hopefully, things are gonna get better. But no, there's a lot of good things have gone on in this county, and, uh, I'm like, uh, to put this council down and the previous councils and stuff, uh, no, I just can't sit up here and go along with that because.
With all due respect, uh, that was my, not my intention to put the council down, so, um, if that was referred to me, I'm not putting anyone down, I'm just making an observation that citizens have made observations to be, and I've made observations before I was there on this county. So by no means I was intended to put anyone down, I'm just highlighting the obvious.
Well, but my intention is the, the good things that have happened in this county over the last, just since I've been on the council the last four years, you know? Uh, a lot of the stuff, the EMS, the fire buildings that we put up and everything. And, uh, but anyway, uh, appreciate the Sheriff's Department, appreciate, uh, the sheriff, and, uh, I learned a valuable lesson last Friday, that we have got to some way get the community involved in supporting our law enforcement people. That's it.
Sheriff Lemon?
Yes, sir. Mr. Sheriff, County Councilperson, first, I said, I appreciate y'all individually, appreciate you collecting, uh, Mr. Minister, I always send a tend, and I want to pay you back on what we're starting to say, that press conference last Friday, I did it all, it's forty-six shares in the state of South Carolina, and I was one of the ones on the front line of that, me and Sheriff PD, Nerds, Purnell, uh, Sheriff for Chesterfield, County James Dixon, Sheriff for Donovan County, James Hudson, and myself, PD, and, um, we all face the same issue, the same problem, and I would agree, it's just not a law enforcement problem, it is a community problem and a community effort, because, you know, with y'all help, we can make it, but without you all's help, we, we, we can't make it. Only thing we can do is do what we can do, but with you all, there's power and leverage, and we can, we can do it with y'all's help. And the last thing I want to say again, I appreciate, I fucking appreciate you all, appreciate everything that y'all have done, even up to this point, I just want to say thank you so very much.
Thank you, Sheriff. Thank, uh, everyone in attendance tonight, Ms. Lawson and all, and Ms. McQueen, I thank y'all for coming out. Thank staff for the hard work and dedication, they've been, uh, doing to prepare this budget. Hope I'll be, uh, back in it in a couple weeks and get this budget approved and, uh, be ready to, to move forward for some new things. Stand your guard.